Do we want to meet with them now, out in the corridor or in another room? Would that be convenient? Mr. Robinson?
My issue is also a systemic issue. And it's not just—I mean, I'm really concerned about what you had to say. But if parents are reporting this type of situation, was there—I have questions like, was there an investigation? You know, was investigation done? What was the result of those investigations? I understand that we're a board and we're in policy, but I want to make sure that Superintendent, you have processes and procedures in place that when parents come to you from multiple schools about one kid, about one child being bullied, that there is some sort of follow-up and investigation. They shouldn't have to come to us at the school board to give resolution. This is not—I feel bad that this is what you're having to do. So I'm curious as what processes were done up until this point? Not just on this one particular issue, but generally, what it is that we do?
Sure. So typically, these issues are dealt with at the school level. When they don't reach satisfaction, obviously, then they escalate, which is what happened here. We did receive an email. I believe we all were copied on that email. I immediately referred that to Mr. Renoff because it dealt with more than one school location. There is a complicating factor in that. This is a contracted bus. It's a service that we provide for an outside entity. But Mr. Renoff has provided me updates. I've received email update directly from the principal. And so typically, when these items come to my attention, they are delegated to the executive director, but I receive immediate reports. And then we go back, number one, not only address the issue, but then we try to figure out, why did it take an email to the superintendent or an appearance before the board to get this level of attention? I don't consider it an unreasonable ask that your child is able to ride the bus from a school to an after-school program and not experience what you describe here. Nowhere has anyone disputed these parents' account of what happened on the bus, which is a huge concern to me, is that when we escalated these issues, it was known to us. And so we are working to answer the questions that you put forth, but I just want you to know I have the same questions that you do. And I'll be following up with Mr. Renoff. I've already received updates, but we'll stay on it.
This sounds like a breakdown in the process, and I don't want to see another parent come in front of me telling me this issue.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Brown?
I too am frustrated about the incidences that happen on the bus, and we sort of shake our heads and say, there's not much we can do. I don't even believe that expelling the children or getting them off the bus or something even corrects the problem, or removing the child who's bullied from the problem. We need to get down to, why is this child bullying other children, and what can we do to change that behavior? It's happening in our schools. It's happening on our buses. Maybe some buses more than others. But—I mean, I saw it on the bus I was riding on. Something has to be done with these children who are expressing this anger. I mean, we see what happens. And when I see it happening in elementary school, I don't know what's going to happen to these kids when they get to middle and high school, but we know from what happened last week. We have got to address these children's anger and these children's mental health issues now. I know SURE says you can—this organization out there says that you can sit them down and you can talk about it. Maybe we need more training of that, but something has to be done. It isn't one bus. It isn't one school. It's happening on several buses, and we don't have enough train bus drivers or aides out there. It isn't what's happening on the school bus, which is the problem. What's happening is what's happening with these children.
We have a full bully protocol. And one of the questions that I have, and I'll have an answer for you by the end of the week, is why that wasn't initiated immediately, is that it's not a matter of suspending the child off the bus, but it's about drilling down on the behavior. Because if it's happening on the bus, it's happening on the playfield. It's happening in the classroom. It's happening in the lunch line. This isn't a unique issue to the bus. It may be unique to that student. And so it's not just a disciplinary act on the bus. And so we'll have an answer to you as to why that protocol, which is—well, I don't have an answer. I will get you one.
And I would like that protocol shared with the principals at all of the schools involved, not only the ones that were brought up today, but others that we've heard about. And then also, you know, perhaps with the Transportation Department, because something has to be done.
That ends our hearing of citizens. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda, Dr. Bowden?
There are no additions or corrections to the consent agenda.
Well, I have if there is one. And it was item nine, approval of—
Yeah. There will be one every time that we meet, and I need to highlight that, is that we do update the HR list, so there is an addendum to the HR list. Thank you.
So do I have a motion for approval of the amended consent agenda?
I move the approval of the amended consent agenda.
Second. Any discussion? Please vote. What? Well, are all of you able to vote?
I can vote.
Yeah. I'm not able to vote, so we're going to have to do a voice vote, please. I'm getting error codes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes carry, four to zero. We have no items pulled for comment. Oh, we do?
Of course he did.
No, I don't have that on my—okay. Mr. Robinson?
I pulled item number 13 for comment. And I just wanted to point out that now, we're going to be able to have dual enrollment with the Premier University of Florida, and that people will be able to take dual enrollment classes at the University of Florida. And I just think that that is great, that that's going to take our district to the next level. So I just want to thank Dr. Bowden for recognizing the importance of the University of Florida and the educational process. So thank you, Dr. Bowden, for realizing that we can always improve on excellence. And by dual enrollment at the University of Florida, we are going there.
Go Gators.
Go Gators.
I was going to say, but I just can't bring myself to.
You could just do this.
No, I cannot.
Well, it's like me doing this at Venice High, right? Same, same thing. Okay, now we move on to new business.
I would move that the agreement between Acceleration Academies LLC and the School Board of Sarasota County, Florida, be approved.
I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
It's not letting me vote. Says you've already voted on it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
The eyes carry, three, two, one. It passes. Next item. May I have a motion?
I would move that the commercial vehicle driving grant proposal be approved.
Second. Do we have discussion?
Second.
I said the second already.
Okay.
Do we have discussion? Go ahead. Dr. Bowden, do we have discussion?
One of the things I'd like to know is, how much will we be contributing to this grant?
So the grant is specifically for equipment, which is a pretty large ask. It's the purchase of the trucks and trailers. We would be responsible for the operating costs, which would come out of the Workforce Development Fund. And we would be responsible for moving up the construction of the CDL driving range, which is planned for our Northport campus, but currently in the out years.
Okay, can I follow up?
Absolutely.
Where are we going to take it from the budget?
Scott, do you want to talk about the $3.3 million wedge of the CDL?
My understanding is, is that the budget is pretty tight right now for capital. So if we have to move money around, where are we moving?
My understanding that you are going to pay for it. No, I'm kidding. So Dr. Bowden actually asked us to run some models, to look at the five-year CIP that you will see in a month or so, and find, are there changes that we can make within the first couple of years to make this work in year one? And they are, but it won't be without having to move some projects. So, for example, one of the models we ran, there is money in the budget for Building Six at Inglewood. The next year—that's in next year's budget, but the next year is really a design year, so we could push the funds for that project out a year without having a real significant impact on the campus of Inglewood, but free those funds up. So we've run a couple of drills that we can talk about, how would we fund this? But it would come from within your current revenue and would be a competing project.
So one of the things I don't like to do is that I have to approve this, not knowing what it is that I'm going to have to not do next year. It really—that bothers me.
The item that is before you today is the grant application. You would actually have to receive in the grant. And so we have the ability to begin the program immediately at our bus facility in Nacomis to allow the program to be stood up. And then we would bring to you a variety of options in regards to the construction of the range. But our authorization today is to submit the application.
So submitting the application does not mean I am agreeing to moving something in the capital budget?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
I agree with Ms. Zucker. It also brings me that we've been talking of late of moving some stuff from five years to three years. And so we're pushing all this stuff forward. And Ms. Zucker makes a great point. If we're going to push all these stuff forward, we really haven't talked about what they're displacing. So we need to have a holistic discussion about what it is—what are the consequences of our actions, and what are the ramifications of the decisions that we make? And I don't feel that we've had those holistic discussions, because some of these things have happened very recently. So I agree with Ms. Zucker.
So we have an opportunity here. It's certainly an opportunity that we're not obligated to participate in, is that there is an $85 million fund that's been assigned to the governor's office. Up until about a week ago, there was only $200,000 allocated out of that fund. Last week, an additional $20 million in projects were allocated out of that. This is an expenditure that the district would have to incur in year four and five of the capital plan, when we do the Phase Two of the Northport campus. At that point in time, it would fall upon the district or the Workforce Development Fund to fund the equipment. And so this is simply a target of opportunity. If the board were to come to the conclusion that the time isn't right, we would forego the opportunity. But what we're asking is the ability to submit an application to compete for the funds, but before accepting the funds, to bring back to you a plan of how would we meet our obligation of moving up the range. If you're not comfortable with that, we will forego the opportunity.
I personally support it, because I know that those funds would be very attractive to us. And I think this is a great new career enhancement opportunity for our students. I do know that a lot of students can't afford to go to this kind of training, because they can't do it as inexpensively as we can. And so I'm for making application and attempting, and then going forward with that as it becomes available. So I support it. Mrs. Zucker?
Is there a time that we need to expend this fund by? If we are given a grant, is there a time that we must use it?
So process would be submission of the grant, a receipt of award, which notification that our grant has been selected. It's my understanding that they have several hundred million dollars in projects that they're considering. So once we were notified that we are a potential recipient, we would come back to you and execute a receipt of the grant, in which you would authorize us to receive the grant. These are rapid-response grants, in that they would expect that there were students being trained by the end of the year. And so that's why we would temporarily house it down at the bus garage, so that we could begin training and meet that component of it. But the idea would be that it would be an immediate expenditure. This fund has a bit of a political history. It is the economic development funds that were previously allocated to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. These funds are intended to directly impact employers in lieu of grants to relocating or expanding employers. They put the money into training, but it's with the stated goal that they have an immediate impact. So they don't want these funds sitting around in school district and community college bank accounts. They want us purchasing the equipment that we promised and training students by year end.
Follow up? I'm sorry, but I'm not comfortable with this. I'm just not comfortable, because I've heard too much this last week of how much money we have to move from the five years to the three years, and how much more money we need. And the fact that are we already short in our capital budget, and we're short—we will be—very well could be short in our operating budget as well. I am not comfortable spending this money right now.
Mrs. Brown?
Have any needs assessments been done? I mean, what employers, especially in our community, need these drivers? Or what is the need—I mean, I don't want to have a program that we would fund and build, and then the need not be there for them. I mean, how do we know that enough students are going to actually sign up for this class? Is there some kind of a numbers—and what do they pay for the class?
So the CDL Truck Driving Operations Course is not only on the state high-demand, high-wage occupation list, it's also on our region. Our region includes both Manatee and Sarasota County. It is always in the top five of that list. It is the one training that—you can be in and out of training in six weeks and expect to be making $40,000. Because of the short term of training, you're able to seat multiple classes per year, unlike a practical nursing course, at which we are able to seat 12 students, and they occupy that seat for 18 months. And in 18-month period, we'd literally be able to turn 12 different classes to make this work. So the number of people entering the workforce through this program is multiplied by that. But truck driving as an occupation is always at the top.
And how much would we charge for the class? And how many are you saying we would be training a year?
Well, we would be able to train 18 at a time. The grant is for six trucks and trailers, so it's 18 at a time. We would attempt to do eight courses per year, basically turning those classes every six weeks. And so you ask me to do the math in my head, 80, 64, 144.
And the money is workforce money, correct?
Correct. It would come out of workforce development. The tuition is on an hourly basis, so the tuition component would be approximately $2.25 per hour. There are lab fees. Unlike other courses, you do have the one-on-one interaction. The trucks that we're actually buying are actually extended cab tractor-trailers, where the sleeping component in the back is converted to seating, so that an instructor goes out on the road with three drivers, and they go and perform a variety of tasks up and down the interstate. Typically, there are private providers that occupy this space, public providers in Orlando and Pinellas County.
Mrs. Brown?
I have concerns about, you know, the cost that it's going to be in the future. But I also think if this is one of the top five high-demand, high-wage jobs that our community and our state is looking for, and we've got an opportunity to apply for a grant to help put this out there, that I would be willing to continue to looking into. I mean, we may not get the grant. They wouldn't be turning around and giving a similar grant to Manatee County. I mean, I would hate to see that Manatee County or Hillsborough County has another one of these in close proximity to us.
It would be difficult. We're in a unique position in which we master-planned our Northport campus to include this range. So there is actually a partnership at Manatee Technical College. They use a private provider, so I don't anticipate them wanting to start their own program. One of the great things about being located where we are, at the intersection of Toledo Blade and I-75, it's ideally suited for training like this, but it also is ideally suited to have a regional drawl. I anticipate that students would come to us from Manatee, Charlotte, Hardy, DeSoto Counties, would come, receive their training, and return to their communities.
And it may give us an economic boost to our economy as well, if we have a lot of young families who are not making high-wage earnings in their family, who can now take advantage of this.
Yeah, I think it follows with, you know, what our plan is to provide these kinds of jobs. I'll be supportive.
Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, this—talking about flashbacks at the middle school earlier, this brings me flashback. I used to be on the board that awarded the contracts for the grants for rapid response. And believe it or not, I was the finance chair. They always pick the CPA for that. So I was involved. So I understand the benefit that it has, but I'm very torn, because Ms. Zucker brings up some very good points. And so, you know, help me get a certain level of comfort. You know, when would we—obviously, we apply for grant, like you said, doesn't mean we have to actually spend it. This is bifurcated process.
You do.
No, but we don't have to accept it, that's what he's—so, you know, help me feel good about this, Dr. Bowden. You know, I'm concerned—you know, Ms. Zucker brings up some very good and very valid points, and I am concerned about how we're pushing everything forward in our capital dollars. And, you know, obviously, we're going to have to move things around, and I don't know what those are. So when do you think we would be able to have a robust holistic discussion about how things are being moved around and forward in timeline? Help me get a sense of comfort with this.
Sure. So, I mean—
Is that an unreasonable request?
Not at all.
Okay.
And so I'll use the term "target of opportunity," is that the expenditure of the $3 million essentially gets you four. It's an expenditure that was previously contemplated, and so it's not a new project, but it is movement within the five-year capital budget. There are a number of options available to us. The other question, and I think—it—I have to choose my words carefully. It falls within the context of safety and security. When someone says, you know, we're moving from five-year to a three-year time horizon, is figuring out, at the end of the day, neither of these projects, Safety and Security or the CDL program, changes the total expenditure in the five-year capital budget. It doesn't change the revenue in the five-year capital budget. It does change—you know, if something moves from year five to year one, then it goes without saying something's going to have to move to year two. And so for us to detail that now—I think Mr. Lempy has given you some ideas that there's some capacity within the Inglewood project—is that I don't want to unnecessarily say, if we get this, then your project is moving back a year. But what I want to do is to submit the application, to bring to you some options. If you say, listen, I'm not willing to make that trade-off, we can decline the award. What I'm asking for today is the ability to submit the application.
I'm sorry. I asked you, when can we have a holistic discussion? And I don't think that you answered my question.
Well, you've had a holistic conversation. Each one of you has met individually on the five-year capital plan.
I have not had a holistic discussion with staff after—since we've talked about accelerating things and moving and changing stuff. I had discussions with people prior to that. I have not had discussions with people since that. So I'm asking you again, when can I expect to have a discussion to understand what the impact is of moving things forward? If I'm not going to have—the—I'm just trying to get a level of comfort.
Well, I've not said to you that I want to move anything. Yet we're playing a game of what-if and hypothetical. And so the five-year capital plan is as discussed with you. And so a decision has not been made in the area of safety and security, and this grant has not been awarded. I'm happy to bring to you and lay the five-year capital plan out, and we can play what-if and move things around. But at this point in time, the five-year capital plan is as presented to you. We've not given you any modifications to that whatsoever.
How long does it take this grant to be approved? What are you looking at time-wise? From the time the application is made until we know something?
That's an interesting observation, that the governor essentially has discretion over this funding source. For the long—up until a week ago, had made only $200,000 in grants from that fund. In the context of asking for that fund to be replenished, many in the legislature said, we gave you $85 million. You only spent $200,000. You're asking us now for another $85 million. It seems like there's plenty of money available. And so we could receive an answer the day after the application is submitted, or it could stay in the queue for months.
If it came back in a day or before our next workshop, could we have some discussions, more in-depth discussions?
That's all I'm asking. Can you give me a day?
Give us a day.
Yes. The workshop, following an award letter from the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, we would bring forth to the board a number of options, so that your acceptance of the grant would also be the authorization to meet our obligations on the capital side. And so that would follow the award—
Good.
—at the next regularly scheduled workshop.
Mrs. Zucker?
So did I hear $3 million? I heard $3 million. I wrote it down.
Right.
But I want to know what it's for. So that's $3 million. Will that come out of workforce funds?
No, ma'am. That would be a capital expenditure.
No.
It's part of Phase Two of the Northport project. So it's already in the capital budget in out years. Currently, if you were to visit the Northport campus, you would see a mound of dirt that has to be moved off-site, and then a rather large concrete pad fencing, lighting, and supporting structures.
I recognize your desire to have this, and the needs for possible job opportunities for our community. But I am not comfortable with voting yes for this without knowing what I'm going to move in the capital budget. And there is too many things in the capital budget that we need for me to be able to sit here and say, okay, I can move $3 million without knowing what I'm moving. So I cannot support this. I'm sorry.
Let's bring it to the next workshop and discuss it more in depth. We're scaring people. But I'm for and in favor of our making application for it. But I understand where Mrs. Zucker—I understand where Mr. Robinson is coming from, and we need to take all these moving pieces and pawns on the board and make sure that we've got everything covered, so.
So that would be the Fed—March 22nd?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you agree to that, Dr. Bowden?
I think I just did. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's all I was asking for.
It's either that or no.
Yeah, it's either that or no.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. We have had discussion. Is the discussion ended?
What is the motion? The motion is to bring this—
We already did—
The motion was to approve.
The motion was to approve.
Yeah, that's not what we're doing.
The grant application.
The grant application.
And that's not what we're doing.
The maker of the motion, then pull it.
So are we pulling this?
No.
We're going to vote on it, but discuss it.
We're going to move to make application, because as I understand it, application has to be made before another month, correct?
That is correct.
We need to make it like now.
So we'll make—the—
Make the application. It doesn't mean that we have to accept it or do anything. But we'll make application now, and that's what this vote is about. And then we will discuss this in depth, whatever happens, or how long it takes, or anything else, at our next workshop.
So my motion to make the application stands—
Yes.
The—at the next workshop, we will make—have discussions about whether—if we are given—if we are approved for the grant, whether we'll accept it.
Correct.
No, no, no. He's going to have a discussion about—
Yes.
—the CIP and how things are going to be moved around—
Ratification.
—a holistic discussion about how things are moving forward, how things are moving back. That's what Dr. Bowden agreed to.
Okay.
Correct. And that would also be put in the context of our Safety and Security Workshop on March 6th. And so both of these items have the potential to impact the CIP.
I have been in this position too many times, and I know when I vote for something, it's out of my hands, so I cannot vote for this.
Any other discussion?
I didn't know about the Safety and Security Workshop on the 6th.
Well, we have a Safety and Security Workshop on the 6th, and we also have a meeting in Venice, so I don't know where we're going to have the executive session—
My office.
—on the 6th. Well, probably would be a good place.
Yeah.
But it would assume be in Venice, correct?
Yes, we would do it immediately preceding that. Yes, we would do it immediately preceding that. Mr. Robinson has a conference room. I know he's within walking distance of City Hall, or I'd be happy to make a call to City Hall and secure a room there.
Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All those in favor verbally say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
We have three yes and one no. The vote passes. And now, we have our last item of new business.
That the amendment, number seven, TOT, the agreement dated January 23rd, 2018, with Schinkel and Schultz for the Suncoast Technical College South Campus be approved as presented.
Second. Do we have some discussion? Mr. Limpie?
As he's making his way forward, you should have a memo from Mr. Limpie explaining this amendment to the budget, as well as supporting documentations were sent to you as read ads.
Yep, and two weeks ago, this coming up Friday is when I would have put that on email to you, so I guess what I'd like to do now is just talk briefly about that. What's on your agenda tonight is an amendment to an architect's contract. We do dozens of these every year, they are typically pretty routine, and as a result of that, we put these amendments routinely on your consent agenda. I think there were two things about tonight's amendment that were unique enough that, as we talked about it, we thought this probably needed to be on New Business and talked about. One is the size of the amendment, and the second is the timing of the amendment. This is an amendment to the contract with Schinkel Schultz Architects, who is the Architect of Record for STC Northport. And I'll give you just a little bit of detail of kind of how we got where we are. When we first entered into our agreement with Schinkel Schultz, we contemplated a facility at STC Northport campus of about 40,000 square feet. As is typically our practice, we base the architect's fee on a percent of construction cost. So as we were looking at the facility and said, "This is about 40,000 square feet," we budgeted that project for about just north of $13 million. As we began to design the facility, as we began to develop the instructional program, as our joint-use projects with the county for the library and the city of Northport for the conference center began to come together, it was pretty clear to us that 40,000 square feet wasn't close to adequate. When you adopted the GMP for this project, you adopted a budget of just north of $21 million. So remember, I said the original estimate was $13 million. Pretty significant change, driven almost entirely by change in scope, change in size of the building. We started off at about 40,000, and we ended up just short of 80,000.
This is embarrassing.
So the building got bigger. Remember, I also said that we compute the architect's fee as a percentage of construction cost. So when our construction costs went from an estimate of $13 million to an actual of $21 million, that obviously changed the architect's fee. So we went back to the fee calculator, recalculated the architect's fee, and this amendment is essentially the difference between what we should have paid the architect at a $21 million GMP and what we initially negotiated with him at a 40,000 square foot or $13 million budget estimate. Please.
When we first started looking at this, we talked about no food service, no, nothing of that nature, and we realized pretty quickly that we wouldn't have any way of supporting the conference center. So that was one of the major changes that we made, correct?
Yeah, so I'd put the big, if you ask me, how did we get from 40,000 to 79,000, I would tell you that I would lump those changes into two big categories. Category number one would be, as you just mentioned, Ms. Goodwin, it'd be kind of the difference in program. So I guess two big things. We added, as the project went down the road, an ACE component, and then when we decided, when the city of Northport came to us and said, "We would like to build a conference center," we collectively made the decision to pull Culinary Arts to the left from Phase Two into what you see on the campus today. So that was kind of number one big piece, was change in the program we were designing to. I will tell you, though, that the bigger piece of this was just our inability at the front end to understand the spaces it took to navigate the instructional program. When we started, when we sat down with the architect and said, "Okay, we have all of these pieces," let me go back to the beginning. We start the project with a thing called a facility list. What are the facility spaces we think we need to offer a particular instructional program? And we put that list together, and that list was just off. As we thought about things like electrical distribution facilities and technology distribution facilities and covered walkways and the widths of hallways and just all of that other stuff that makes a building bigger, our initial estimate just missed the ball. So when you add those two things together, the increase in the square footage that we just didn't think about at the front end, with the additions to the instructional program, that gets you essentially from 40,000 to 79,000 square feet, which impacted both your GMP and the architect's fee. Did that make sense?
Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, first off, it seems, it seemed that, I wasn't on the board when this was originally voted on, but it seemed to me on the outside, sitting in the audience, that we purposely, by design, tried to make the two STC campuses very similar. And so, for you to say that, you know, electrical distribution, it seems extremely odd to me because you weren't, I understand if you were creating a completely different building, but since you were doing a very similar building, it seems, that seems very odd to me. The other thing that seems odd to me is I have city commissioners and county commissioners coming to me saying things like, "But we paid you for the extra fee. You guys end up charging us." And the city of Northport and the county commission paid the school board for the extra cost of the library, the extra cost of the conference room, and it seems like we didn't pay our expense as a result of that extra. We took their money, but we didn't pay the expense that was associated from them. So what do I say to those people? And I have more questions after that.
Well, I guess the first thing I'd say is they're wrong. I don't even, I can't recall the logic.
So the logic is, is that there was an amendment for $400,000 as a result of additional space?
$379,667.
$379,667.
Having nothing to do with the library or the conference center.
That has nothing to do with the increased square footage, because that's what it says.
Yes.
So if you go back to when the city of Northport said, "If you're going to build that site, we'd like for there to be a conference center," they paid for the conference center.
And the design of the conference center.
Correct. We then said, "If there's going to be a conference center, it would make sense that we put Culinary Arts with the conference center." So the Culinary Arts piece is us. The city of Northport had nothing to do with that decision, other than being the catalyst of saying, "Let's move the conference center." When Sarasota County said, "We'll put a library there," we said, "Then adult and community enrichment partners with the library, it too should move." To your prior point, you're exactly right. Our original facility list was, "We need a business ed classroom identical to room 220 on the main campus. We need a nursing lab identical to room 238." And so, those specs were spot-on. What didn't happen in the process is those non-instructional spaces like MDFs, tech support corridors, were never added in the process. But as far as the facility itself, the classroom spaces are identical, and that's how they were spec'd from the main campus.
And I can tell you this, at this point, I deeply want to vote against this, but it's not the architect's fault. And two, more importantly, Scott Limpie, you stepped up and you took responsibility, and in my world, that means a lot. And so, I believe that you're going to, because you're being an honorable person, that you're going to ensure this doesn't happen again. So the fact that you've stepped up and you've done the memos and you've documented that that's, I'm going to end up supporting this, but if you wouldn't have stepped up and done the honorable thing, I probably would not. And so, I do say that, you know, I have, not like I didn't have respect before, but you've increased the level of respect, the fact that you've taken ownership of this. But the way this came about and the processes is not our finest hour of the school district.
Absolutely not, and that's why I felt like I owed you the explanation in writing, because I agree with everything you just said. A couple of things I want to comment on. First of all, you said this is not the architect's fault. I will tell you that I personally have spent hours with Schinkel Schultz, in particular Ken Dean, the local principal. They have been immensely patient with us through this entire process, so not only is it not their fault, but I see them as an incredible partner, and I look forward to working with them in the future. I just think they did some wonderful, frankly, what we did is we asked them to carry a $400,000 bill on their book. That's just not okay, and to use Dr. Bowden's words, "That's not how we do business." And it's not. There was a second, oh. In terms of sort of owning up, I honestly believe, and I've debated with my team about this, but I think part of what made this happen is, those of you who are on the board at the time will remember the day when we sat right here and we talked about adding $6 million to this project, and the board reluctantly supported that, and we added money. As this thing started to develop and my team got real uncomfortable about, "Can we afford this amendment within the current budget?" I was pretty vocal, and I was pretty vocal through the entire project. Whatever you do, figure this out, because we are not going back to the school board and ask for more money. And I feel like that, and I created that environment, but I feel that, like that environment had some to do with this. My project team was not going to come to me and say, "Scott, go back to the board." Now, important to understand that this amendment is not asking for more money. It is within the project budget. It's just an amendment to the architect's contract within that already set budget.
And my last comment is, I just want to understand this. So if we have someone design a building, and they get a percentage of the construction, and then we, for whatever reason, decide we want more expensive floors, but the building is essentially the same, we not paying more money to the architect? Because you said it's a percentage of construction.
Depends, and so we would go back and sit down with the architect and negotiate this, and I have, I have tons of homework that myself and Ken Dean have done, but we asked him to go back through kind of the way of work and document where this came from. So what was in this amendment is not changing floor type, it was changing design of the building.
But I'm just saying, you said it's a percentage of construction cost, so if the construction costs went up, not because of the change of the actual physical structure, but if it went up because supplies cost more, or would that, did we enter an agreement with the architect that they were getting a percentage of the construction cost?
No, the agreement, and I have a copy of it if you want to see it.
But that's what you said, that's what I'm trying...
Initially, so the agreement said, "We're going to build a $13 million building. We run a kind of a fee calculator essentially against that, and we enter a contract with the architect that says 908,000, I don't remember the exact number, but, and so it's for a dollar amount."
Okay.
And then, as things change, we negotiate amendments to that contract.
Okay, that's better. You had said something different earlier. You'd said it's a percentage of the construction cost, so...
And that's where we start.
I'm done, thank you.
But you were looking at almost value-engineering it with your staff, if you will, because you had this issue with coming back to us and having more money. It's like, not enough elevator buttons, right? That's the one I always use, is it's common in a commercial building, anytime you value engineer, you value-engineer some of the comfort factors, like you can't race to get the elevator button and get down to the end of the bank of elevators and catch that one, so it's the same kind of thing.
Well, at the time, Dr. Bowden was the executive director of Current Technical, and so he sat in some of those meetings as we value-engineered things, and so we know that we took some things out to make the budget work. And I think if you talk to Mike Endy, who's running the program for Mr. DePillo, Dr. DePillo now, he would tell you there's some, if he were king for a day, there's some things we would do different. But that VE effort was about getting the project in budget, so...
Mrs. Zucker?
I just want to say, I can't see us not paying our bills, so I don't see there's any way for us not to approve this. So thanks again, Scott, for giving us all the information beforehand.
Sure, and you know, Chair Ziegler's not here, but she and I have spent as much time talking about this as any of us have, and one of her concerns, rightly so at the very beginning, is I don't want that to become the reputation that the school board doesn't pay its bills, and that's not true, but she had a legitimate concern about sending that message, and if she were here, I think she'd say that.
Thank you.
And so, I think you've heard from Mr. Limpie, and I just want to make sure you hear from me, is that as we worked our way through this, this is not the way we should be doing business. We should not be putting you in a position in which an item comes before you and which we tell you, "You can either vote yes, or we're going to be sued and lose." And that's really where we put you in this position, is we can have a nice, robust debate, as we did on the prior item, do we want to have the expenditure? But we typically have that before we commit to the expenditure, and that's what happened in this process, is we had a member of our staff make a commitment that I believe exceeded his authority. I believe Mr. Limpie is being extremely generous and accepting responsibility because it falls in his division, but we should not have staff members saying, "We'll take care of you." It's an item that comes before the board, and I, as superintendent, never want to put an item before you, which I say to you, you have only one option, which is to say yes. That's not the right way to do business.
And had this been on your, in my mind, just with the benefit of hindsight, had this amendment been on the same board agenda where you adopted the GMP, that would have number one, been right, but number two, it wouldn't have been an item of discussion. So I agree with Dr. Bowden completely.
Any other discussion? We've had a motion and a second. Should we have a, can we have a voice vote now? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The ayes carry, four to zero. We're done with new business. We'll move on to announcements and comments. Anyone have a comment? And of course, we have our dear Shirley, Ms. Shirley Brown.
I just wanted to say that I'm sorry that this Safety and Security workshop will be on the 6th of March. As I said before, I was booking a trip to South America with my husband. Thought I had it from March 12th to the 20th, but it ends up that it's the 2nd through the 10th, and they will not allow me to change the date and will not give me a refund. And as much as I love you all, I'm not going to throw that money away, and I'm going to go on that trip with my husband, and I will be missing that meeting, but I'm sure that Dr. Bowden will fill me in, and I know you'll all miss me.
We will. Mr. Robinson?
We love you too, Shirley. What I wanted to say was, I had the opportunity to be at Heron Creek for an event, and while I was there, I was invited by some behavioral specialists to be an observer with the interaction that they had with a kid that was being interviewed by DCF, and I don't want to get too much into it, but it was a very tense and emotional moment there, and the behavioral specialists were able to, they did a yeoman's job, and they were able to talk the student down and make everything okay, and got him to leave with his uncle and with no incident, and it was all because of the relationship they had created with this person. And so I said to them, I was like, "Wow, you guys did such a great job." I mean, this is a testament to how important one-on-one relationships are, and you know, the fact that you guys have developed this over, you know, with these students over such a long period of time, it pays off. And they told me, they had only been with that student, had only been there for a week. And so, it showed me how, you know, they were able to identify an issue, they were able to, you know, give it to underfided attention and made sure that, we hear about all these incidences that occur, and we never hear about the instances that don't occur. And so, you know, I just, I don't want to embarrass them by saying their names, but we have staff out there every day in and day out that on the front lines that are making sure that things go smoothly. And so, for every one instance that you hear where there's a problem, I assure you, there are literally 1,000 instances that never occurred that staff took care of, and they took care of it the right way, and they're giving these kids the skill sets to deal with their emotions so that it doesn't happen in the future. So I just want to make sure that, given the climate that we're living in, that people understand that there's a lot of good things and a lot of success stories going on in our district every single day.
I know you're not comfortable sharing the names in an open forum, but if you'll send those names to me, I would like to reach out to them and thank them.
I know that we have several administrators in the back row, they're chit-chatting, and they all do a great job, Chris Renoff, and I just have to give a shout-out to Steve Cantiz, because Steve Cantiz has a tough job. He's in charge of high schools, and he's called me at night, you know, late at night. He's been up with situations of threats recently, and a lot of things going on, a lot of moving parts in these high schools, so I just want to give a shout-out to Steve Cantiz, thank him for the job he does, because it really makes a difference in the lives of our students, and thank you, Steve. It's really appreciated. I want to say that the legislature is still meeting, and they're in session, and they're, you know, two and a half weeks to go. We hope they'll be done by March the 9th, so please keep the cards and letters flowing and tune into the Florida Channel if you want to see some really exciting things going on in Tallahassee. Our next board meeting is on March the 6th, that's 6:30 at night. It will be held in Venice, at Venice City Hall, and we'll have an executive session preceding that in Venice or somewhere at 5:00 on that same day. So I wanted to mention that as well. And Dr. Bowden, do you have any closing comments?
I would be remiss if, before we adjourn, that I did not point out that we are T-minus four weeks. We are 28 days from our referendum on March 20th, and I promised we would count that down. I used to call it absentee voting, but... I used to call it absentee voting, but vote by mail is underway, so we are in the window, and our community is deciding whether our referendum will continue in support of our students.
Went to a Chamber annual breakfast last week, and we had a shout-out from Charlie Bailey, and another shout-out from Kevin Cooper, and it was really a great feeling to see in the ballroom of the Ritz Carlton, them, you know, saying how important it was to our students and to our schools. So, it's been a great board meeting. Anybody have any other statements or questions? We're adjourned.
Do you have something for me?